We're going to call it a order. Roll call, please.
Nancy Cupka.
Present.
Terry Pavasich.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Rick Pavanato.
Here.
Don Renner.
Here.
Eleanor Flynn.
Here.
And Kirk Kaufman.
Here.
We have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with a motion to approve the minutes for January 28, 2019 business meeting and January 28, 2019 closed meeting. So moved. Terry?
Second.
Dan.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye. Minutes are approved. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to their recommendations and reports of the superintendent. Dr. Theeley, proposed student fees.
Before we go to student fees, I just wanted to address the board about the last week's events. As you know, last week, North High junior Beth Dunlap was hit by a car outside of North High last Tuesday. Beth's injuries were unrecoverable and she died on Friday. We offer our deepest condolences to Beth's family for their devastating loss and ask everyone to continue keeping them in their thoughts. We are all heartbroken from last week's events. I particularly would like to thank the community and many outside of our community that have offered condolences and support to the Dunlap family and to our students and staff over the past week. I'm especially grateful for our first responders, our staff that were first on the scene, our counseling teams from both North and South High, and for the incredible support of our students that they've offered each other and the dedication of our entire staff in responding to this tragedy. I'd also like to thank Janice and her entire administrative team and the district administrative team for their caring response over the past week. As we know from the information released from the DuPage County State's Attorney, Beth was crossing the street appropriately with the walk signal and within the crosswalk. We've also learned that the driver who struck Beth has been reported to have been under the influence. Even so, this tragedy has caused us and many in the community to raise concerns about the safety of the perimeters of both North and South High. As a result, we're continuing to evaluate the crossings at intersections surrounding both schools to ensure that we're doing all we can to keep students safe. We'll continue to bring ideas and we'll raise some of those later tonight around pedestrian safety at both schools to our Board of Education for further discussion in the weeks and months ahead. So terrible news to report.
Thank you. I have been really struck by what's been posted in social media and in the paper, especially from the Dunlap family. And I would just hope we could all, they're encouraging that for, in memory of their daughter, people do 18 acts of kindness because she was number 18 on the volleyball team. And I think that would be just a very good tribute for all of us to aspire to between now and the next meeting. Okay.
All right. With that, we'll try to continue on. So first item is proposed student fees for 1920. And I'll turn the floor over to Mark to discuss that topic.
Thank you. So we have the five-year history of how our fees are. There's a recommendation to increase the registration slash textbook fee by $10. We haven't increased it for a couple of years. And our normal course of action is to every year or two or three, increase it something close to cost of living. And so, and not changing it for two years, it's about a little over 1.5% for each year, 3.2% for, you know, the last two years, for this year. So that's the biggest change. And I'll talk about in a little more detail the registration fee, just to give you more detail in a couple of minutes. I'll have a breakdown of that for you. The other adjustment here, or the change that we recommend would be the third item, the one-to-one digital learning fee from $90 to $95. We still don't have a unit that lasts four years. That we, you know, we're thinking they're getting better. We might be able to get a larger number of those. Each, there's a percentage of those that make it to a fourth year. Because a lot of individuals say, well, you know, I can buy a new one for $300. Why do I have to pay 90 times four? Well, because the units in schools and backpacks just don't last four years. Batteries get worn down. It's just normal wear and tear and breakage. But, so, we did actually put on a couple of junior texts. The really large percentage of responsibility is fixing these and keeping them and maintaining order. And so we normally would give a loaner out to a student when there's a breakage or repair needed. And then they go to work on it, either replacing it or using boneyard pieces from other machines and replacing them, cobbling it together. So we have not increased that fee since we first started it in the 2015-16 school year. And so we thought we should just start to add a little bit to that this year and then wait it out and see if these newer models do hold up. We did a better first-year performance out of the newest models. There were fewer repairs needed on them in the first year. So we are hopeful that we'll get a greater number of them to make it all four years. But we just don't think we're going to get that. We aren't sure about it yet. So we do think an increase is due there. And everything else is pretty much the same. There's one change that we're recommending. It's, is that another change? I mean, it's a family pass. It's a little bit of an administrative issue. It's, and that a lot of times freshman parents buy the family pass even though it's not, you don't, we don't charge anything for a freshman game. It was usually too small. You know, the crowd isn't very big. It's for the larger events where we have security and we have a lot of staff working for those events that we charge a fee. A $75 fee would, is a family pass, but when people show up at the gate, it's very difficult to know. And a lot of times, you know, families grow by seven people because they have neighbor kids and, you know, so they know that it's, it's just really hard for the people at the gate to know when. And a lot of times people forget their pass. It's just, it's just a headache. And so our recommendation here is to change the structure. We charge $5 for an adult and charge for any students that, or not charge for any of our students that have an ID or the, in fact, the other team, a competing team that they have a school ID. But otherwise, everybody would pay $5. And there's actually a bit of a monitoring issue that we have with junior high-age students that come here and are, have no chaperone, have no parent accompanying them. And it kind of creates a problem. And so we suggest if you're not accompanied by an adult, you pay $5. But if you're accompanied with an adult and your parent is there, you can bring in eight kids as long as, you know, you're accounting for them. You're saying, I'm going to watch these kids. And overall, it'll be, we think comparable in terms of cost, maybe even, you know, a little better on the parent's side because now each parent will be paying as they come in. But the students, we'd like to make it as friendly as we can to the students and get them there. So the fees have been set by, really, over time by the conference that we're in. Everybody in the conference is hopefully charging the same rate. But we found it's really gone south since there's not, everybody's doing the same thing. So Ed and Janice did bring it to the conferences last week. They're, I think they were saying it was receptive to the idea. They, some of them wanted to think it out and still talk about it. It's a recommendation to go along with the conference. It's not a rule or law or anything. So we'd like to do this and maybe we'll get some feedback by the next meeting. We're not asking for action tonight. This is just for a year or two to see what the thinking is right now. And then we'll bring this back probably in this format, but maybe not if we get some feedback from the conference, other people in the conference of different idea. That's the one piece that we think is still not yet locked in in terms of our recommendation. And if you look at the second slide, Tonya, pop it up here. Just to, every once in a while, we throw this together just to try and get a feel for where's that $315 going that's in the registration textbook fee. And so we break it out this way. You can see if the, not the scenarios on there, but the first column on the left there, the current fee, roughly $45 we were setting aside, just for the secretarial maintenance of entering people in, tracking them for buses, doing different, all the different things that individual student might have tied to their registration. Consumable supplies, this is, you know, it really comes out to 40 cents or so a class for a kid. I mean, it's really, over the course of 176 days, it's really pretty small. But it helps us defray some of the costs with consumable. This really became a little bit bigger when we came into actually putting printers out there because we use a lot of, you know, we aren't paperless. We never, you know, really, for kids, they want to have paper in front of them, do things. And it actually, with technology, we actually, in some cases, increased our paper usage at the student level. Textbooks is one that we're now moving more to digital textbooks, but they actually cost more than the hardcover books. And so we use just an average of 5.5 textbooks per year, both semesters. Might be a little bit less than that, but that's kind of an average. $127 is actually kind of low, so that kind of balances that out a little bit for what a book costs. And they usually have a seven-year life on average. Course materials, they, that would just be for every kid that signs up now. When they're, almost all kids that are here in English, they, all four years. And they have paperbacks that we have, we try and target $30 cost, but teachers pick different books every year. And that's, that's what we're, the $30 English paperback cost is allocated for. Other lab courses, we combined this into the registration fee several years ago so that we don't charge for individual labs. Most high schools in DuPage still do charge by lab. But it was something that we thought was, let's just average it out for everybody and this is the average that we came up at that time. And that comes out to about, you know, $50 approximately is where we were at with that. Also, last year, if you recall, we included other things. We included admission to athletic events, admission to plays, and admission to musical. All is now with the student ID instead of charging individually for that. And so that's another component of the $315 fee. So what the, we did it this way and it was actually, there was a request, if you recall, for TCD, by TCD parent, to waive the fee or reduce it. So, but there's different couple scenarios we could think about if we were going to do it. My personal recommendation is not to do it. It's difficult for the very, you know, the few cases we get where there's an issue, you know, where someone asks for a refund or wants to prorate it for some reason, some unusual circumstance. We do charge by semester if someone leaves in the middle of the semester already, so we can, we can avoid that issue. But there's cases where maybe an eighth grader might come in for a math class and sit in some of our classes. We've had that in the past where one or two students only comes in for one or two classes. It's pretty rare. But we ran it through that way. Okay, what if that student came in for a math class? He wouldn't have the English paperbacks. He wouldn't have some of these things that apply. And so that cost would actually be pretty, pretty low for that student. We could consider prorating it that way. For the TCD student on the right side for a full year, both semesters of TCD, they, the second and third line down, they actually would pay, could pay a supply fee to TCD. We don't charge them that supply fee, and they wouldn't have a textbook fee with us. They also wouldn't have the English paperbacks or the lab courses that would apply to that particular fee. So actually, there would be, there is a drop in terms of the $315 fee that we normally charge for those students. But it's, if you look down at the bottom here, actually, there's another $200 charge that we do charge the TCD parents. And it's, and it's really just to make sure that they're serious about keeping their enrollment. Because if they enroll and we reserve a place for my TCD, they still charge us the annual tuition rate whether that student shows up or not. And so several years back, we incorporated a $200 lock-in fee so that they really make their mind if they're going to go. We have had very few people not show up, or kids that show up now that we've incorporated that fee. So technically, we're actually charging $515 for someone who just wants to use the TCP, TCD privilege in our district and go to them. But there's a couple items at the bottom that kind of help offset the, the daily bus. These are also students that now need to be bused to TCD from either campus. TCD does not allow parking of students and driving to their program. That would cost about $1,200 a year per student. And there's a TCD tuition charge for that student of $4,846. So there's some pretty large costs that we have. Even though the registration fee could be argued down to a lower number, we have some other fees that come in for those students that, from our perspective, we just wanted to keep it separate and simple, not charge them a lower fee and then charge them something different for transportation, let's say. So we just, you know, I think the recommendation at this point is to just leave this the way it is with the registration fee for everybody. But this is there for discussion and see if you wanted to do, do some kind of proration. And I'll, I'll leave you with that invitation to discuss it now. Or maybe if you want to bring it back for next, when we go for the fees next year, you'll have more time to consider it now that we've walked through it. Or we can discuss it further at the next meeting.
Mark? So do you take, do you actually take the fees and allocate a portion, you know, proportionally as you've, as you've listed up there to the different line items in our budget based on this?
No, we have a, we have a per pupil allocation that we give to the students which exceeds this amount. So it helps to fray that, but we don't, so we, and it's just our system of managing it because each year we try and add a cost of living increase to our, each of the schools. So we don't, we don't take the...
What I was getting, so what I was getting to is that, you know, what we're looking here is a rationale for how you come up with the $315, right? But it's not like you're really taking each one of those things and, you know, allocating to those things specifically.
Not in most cases. Like particularly if you get to the admission and fees, we don't put that into a revenue account that's for admissions and fees. We just let that, that number has dropped over the last couple of years because of just not charging it anymore.
Sure. So by sharing this, you know, you're demonstrating how we might go about trying to figure out how much we might prorate or something if we were to decide, if we were to decide to do it.
Some of that. I mean, the admission to athletics, that was something that we calculated based on how many admissions we figured we would lose. And so we justified why we had to increase the fee that year, but we, we did it by consolidating.
I'm just, I'm struck with the bottom, the bottom two lines there and looking at how much, you know, you look at the benefits.
Of TCD.
I would have a hard time, you know, thinking about prorating it, knowing that, you know, there's that additional, there's $6,000 in additional cost to the, to the district.
For the TCD person.
Right, for a TCD student, yeah.
No, and earlier this year, when we were approached by a parent and community member about prorating TCD, actually, administratively, our discussions were more about a student that was only taking one or two classes. That, it, actually, once you pass two classes, it doesn't make sense anymore for, for what's there. But a person taking a single course or two courses, we have very few students that do that, but you could see a rationale for that based on Mark's kind of work of how we've allocated things out. But beyond that, you've crossed over into the spot where the benefits you're receiving in materials and everything are greater than, than what the fees are that you're paying.
It's a tremendous opportunity.
So you're speaking of a home, like a homeschool student taking one or two courses?
Like one course, yeah. Yeah. Or somebody who's, for medical reasons, is taking one course, or they just need to take one course to graduate or whatever. That would kind of make sense because, you know...
You're not using all of the facilities.
Or receiving all of the resources or all of those things. But, and two courses, you're getting close, but then after that...
I would say though, I mean, your, your property taxes don't get adjusted based on how much are, you know, I'm just, you know, so I guess it's a discussion we can, we can have. From the TCD perspective, I don't, I don't see us prorating that, at least myself being in favor of that.
So we kind of thought this would be, we're not bringing this for approval until next month. So we thought this would be kind of a first reading kind of thing, give you some time to think about it. We'll bring it back next week to see if there's any questions. And then again, next board meeting for approval, assuming that we don't hear any major concerns.
So can I ask then at the next, our next meeting that we, we actually see some numbers in terms of what's the effect of this? So in other words, you know, the changes that you're, you know, the increases that you're looking at and the changes you're looking at making, what does that really mean in terms of dollars you're expecting in, in the impact?
It would be roughly $120,000 for the, the fee increases that I had in the prior sheet. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, on the prior, on the prior sheet. So you're $120,000 even with the change in the athletic admission or plays?
That's a real tough one to figure. So, you know, we're assuming that, you know, it, because we are going to be charging a little bit more because it used to be $4 for an adult, now it's going to be $5. That's going to help us. We already excuse our own students. And so the only variance we would have would be the students that are unattended, you know, not coming or, so instead of getting $3 a student for that, we're waiving that. But a lot of those are, could have been another family pass, you know. So I'm not expecting a huge change because of that. We will have, just have to kind of see and we're going to monitor it, of course. And if it's a real big change there, we might have to go higher than $5 or something or just, you know.
Yeah, I'd hate to see the, I'd hate to see the increase that you're looking for in the registration fee, which I, I won't be supporting because I principally am against that.
You never do. That's all right.
That's correct. So it's from, so, and I'm not going to rehash all that. That's just my stance. But, but to see any increase there lost because of this other change would, would be unfortunate and I think kind of unintentional.
It's really hard to tell. Our best guess is probably be equal. But we'll know next year.
I guess my question is, is how many students really only take one class?
No, it'd be very few. It'd be very few.
Is like a handful?
Yeah.
Maybe 10 at the most?
Yeah. You probably don't even have a handful. Yeah.
District-wide. I mean, you know...
Gina says maybe five at the most, district-wise.
Yeah. So that's who we would be saving the, the money for is like five students or 10, maybe?
But still...
Let's go on the outside 10, you know?
To those families, it's hard to justify to them that they're paying that much for, now, I will say that $315 for a year of a course at the level that we offer in District 99 is a pretty good deal. But, but still, when you break it out this way and we kind of come up with how our fees are, it doesn't seem fair.
Any other concerns?
More will see this several more times.
Staffing and curriculum?
All right. I'm going to turn this one over to Pete. We're heading into staffing season and as you heard earlier this year, we made some changes in how we do the math around this. So Pete's going to give you kind of the pre, the latest preview in what we're doing here.
Okay. So the objective tonight is to just remind you of a couple of things and to share with you some of the kind of behind-the-scenes work that gets done, that we think it will be much more efficient going forward than we have been in the past using, you know, allowing the technology to do some of the work for us. So I want to recognize Jure Etheridge, Jim Struck, Rod Rousseau, all from the district office, Keith DeVorken, who does data for the district from North High, have put in a lot of work in helping us to take this process from the initial course requests all the way through filling all of the positions and making sure at the end that what we have agreed upon in our FTE in March is what we hire to during the summer and budget for so that it all runs consistent throughout the entire process. And so I'll give you some examples of what I'm talking about here as we go forward. So as a couple reminders, we are, we changed the process this year in part because the document that we use annually for sectioning, gosh, becomes really difficult to understand. And we want to make this to be something where if all of us had to be replaced tomorrow, the people coming in after us would be able to do the job and not require all the institutional knowledge necessary to understand the 60-foot notes that we had and the below-the-line part of the document.
Yeah.
As a reminder, students are required to take six classes, but many take seven. And our staff teach five classes a day. So we decided to move forward with an approach where we were looking at the course requests that students make instead of the course enrollment number in terms of bodies in the building. Georgia and Sarah have shared their ideal class sizes for us with the various courses. And based on the, what we call simple tally numbers that came out of the student registration appointments with the counselors on both sides of town, they're working with the department chairs and the building administration to determine sections, which is timely because tomorrow morning is actually our district sectioning meeting where they'll bring those numbers to us to start taking a look at kind of first blush, where are we at in all of our departments, how many sections are we going to offer of each course, what does the total FTE request look like for both sides of town. And then, once all of that work gets done, we'll come back on March 18th with what we have done in the past with the document that's a little easier to understand, the recommendations for our staff for tenure, moving our first year to our second year, second to third, et cetera. So all of that will still take place the way it's happened in the past. We're just, we'll be sharing with you document that looks a little different. All right. So here's an example of the first kind of spreadsheet, if you will. We call this Jure's draft because she spent a lot of time in putting this together. The numbers here are not important. All right? These numbers mean nothing other than it was us playing with some prior year's data just to kind of see what it looks like. But as you can see, there are a lot of columns here being accounted for. And this is just one department that we're showing you. And along the bottom, you can see that there's a tab for every single department. And so you'll have the course code and the course title for each class that there is within those various departments. All right? So ultimately, we'll be determining, like in column M, what those sections will be for this coming year through the sectioning meeting tomorrow and subsequent conversations that might take place over the next week or so on that.
Pete? I know you say we have the, the class cap and the recommended class size. Do we have a minimum number of students? So if we don't get, you know, 10 or 15 or whatever, we're not going to run the class?
So in March 18th, one of the documents that we bring forward for you that comes out of Gina's area are the classes that are what we call the below 20.
Right.
Where we are advocating for those classes to be run even though they're below 20.
So that's 20 is the automatic...
20 is kind of where we generally start looking at, should we be running this or should we not? And every year, there's probably three or four that are below 20 that for various reasons we believe we need to run them. They might be capstone courses. They may be courses that we've just recently approved that we're trying to get off the ground. And by running it the first year will enable us to get numbers in the next year. Sometimes it's our honors or our AP courses that we want to make sure are still running. So...
Or ones programmatic in a series where if you lost a year, you destroyed the whole program.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So as you can imagine, putting all this together was very time-consuming. The way this fits in then to the next step, if I go to our next document. All right. So in column N here, you see 16.8. Again, these are not actual numbers, but that's the number that was in column M from the prior spreadsheet that I showed you right before this. So once that number gets settled on, it feeds automatically into this document. So they now can share this with the department chair who can then... So they now can share this with the department chair who can then take that number and start working on their own department's schedule. And so just give you a quick little example here. This is now in math. If, if I am, looks like this is North, so John Heldman, and I start wanting to assign All right. You can see that there's a drop down list that appears. And so now John can put in there, all right, Katie's going to teach Math 1, oh, I guess I gave it to Emily. First period, let's give it a classroom, 119, 119. I go to the next teacher, let's just put Math 1S. If I put the same room number in there, you should start to see it being a different color. That tells the department chair, and I'm not great with colors, but I believe it should be red now instead of black. That tells the department chair, I accidentally double scheduled that room that period and they know, they know they need to go back. Okay? As I go to my section balance sheet, again, these numbers are off, but this starts to put then the number for the Math 1 and the Math 1S that you assigned onto this document so that again, they can start looking at, do my numbers match what they're supposed to? We have a tab for teacher balance. You can see that both Emily and Erin have now been assigned one class each. Again, if they assign them too many, the number becomes a different color. If it's too few from what it's supposed to be, it's a different color. So that they, when they get done, they should be able to quickly eyeball this and see, everybody's got a duty, everybody's got a lunch, and they have five classes. Or something is going to be colored that would alert them that Houston, we have a problem here. Now, and it could be that it's okay to have less than the right number of classes because they could be like a Keith Deворcan, he spends part of his day as data manager, part of his day as science teacher. So in science, he's going to have a .8 assignment instead of a 1.0. But that at least allow them to kind of take a look at it and very quickly ascertain whether or not they've got some major flaws in the department's schedule and we can get these fixed before we start running the student selections through the master schedule. Because once we do that and accept those schedules, it's very difficult to now move a teacher's assignment, change a classroom, et cetera.
Pete, I got a little lost here. So the 16.8 on the other sheet was a representation of what?
16.8 staff members would be teaching in that department next year.
Okay.
Based on the number of students that have requested courses in those departments.
That was the one before with the 56 students requested?
Correct.
Okay.
So like just shy of 17 full-time staff members would be needed to teach the course sections that were determined by the student requests in that particular department.
And that's a key part of all of this. We used to start with a number of staff, right? Based on projected enrollment. This new model takes a look at, it's all, building the entire schedule around the students, right? We start with what the students need and build everything from there.
So another question, because I don't know if I was supposed to be able to click into these, but I wasn't able to.
No, you can't. You can't.
Okay. Another question then, so when we do it this way, will we ensure we have enough staff based on the students?
That, that's what should help drive because when we set the limit, let's just say 26 students per class, the formula then takes the number of requests divided by 26 and tells you, here's the number of sections you should run. And then once you add all those up, you get to that 16.8 number that you saw on that first document.
So to piggyback on Sherelle's comment or question here, you're part of, so you're part of that institutional knowledge that we're not going to have for a whole, whole lot longer, unfortunately. And, and so I really appreciate us doing this. As convoluted as the previous process was, it still yielded a good result. It took way too much time to, to figure it out in like 60 footnotes, as you're saying. Could we take Juree's fine tool here and apply it to what we've done last year or the year before and see if it generates the same sort of result to, and then that would give us, I think, more confidence? I mean, this is something we needed to do.
They already did that.
They did that already.
We did that already, yes. Using Juree's years' numbers, we were very close to what we sectioned at.
Perfect.
Probably.
Where 60 footnotes were doing what they were supposed to do, providing us the right amount of staff we needed.
No, I get.
Convoluted way to do it.
But that's just, it's like, that's why we didn't change, I think, for so long because it was working and you don't want to fix something that's not broke. But the, you know, the problem going forward is, boy, what do we do if, if certain people aren't here? And it's taking a considerable amount of time to do it. I, I assume that this process actually is going to maybe be a quicker way to, to get to what we need.
I would, I would venture to guess that not maybe this first year.
Okay.
But down the road, absolutely, this should be, should be quicker.
This year, of course, because there's been a considerable investment of time and I think all those people that, that you mentioned at the beginning too, because this is really a great, I mean, this is, we need this.
Sure.
But once we have this in place, it should, it should save, save some time and, and free up people to, you know, spend their time on other things than trying to figure out, you know, any more time than necessary to figure out what we need in terms of.
That is the goal. In looking at prior years, several of them would have been a slight increase in FTE if we were to stay true to the class size that was suggested as being the ideal limit for a particular course. So in some places, it would be that we stuffed more students in to come out with the number that we were at. So it's, it's going to be interesting, but we're very close from prior years if we were to do it this way.
The piece that's missing from that analysis is, is, well, you know, here's what we had. Was that really adequate? Did that really work? You know, I mean, in fact, maybe we should have had just a little bit more.
Well, and this is always, so. This is also the step before we actually load the schedules and put kids in and conflicts emerge and there's all of that massaging of the schedule that happens anyway. So you're going to have certain scenarios where it looks like you're going to be overloaded in a section based on the raw numbers, but because of how the classes stack, the kids wouldn't fit into those anyway, so they move into another spot where there's an opening. So there's all of this, these other steps that happen after this. But this actually mirrors the way, what's that?
Those changes will be easier though. I mean, I'm just, you know, now you have a tool.
No, once, once those are in, those changes are all pretty much the same. Yeah, yeah. From that point on, it's the same. But this also mirrors the way that the majority of schools in the area handle sectioning and scheduling. So as administrators come in over time or we recruit people from outside of the district, it's much easier for them to step into this model than it would be our old model. So there's some consistency in that as well.
Excellent. It's a big deal.
Give me two? No? Okay. All right. And so again, we just want to try to make sure that we have the correct FTE numbers, not too many, not too few. We're running this with the various spreadsheets to match what we call position control in e-finance, which is where we keep track of how many staff that we have, which then again leads to the budget being what we had set to spend on our personnel here through this FTE sectioning process. So just wanted to give you kind of a peek behind the curtain a little bit before we bring the actual numbers and things forward at the March 18th board meeting.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Parent-teacher advisory committee?
This is the committee that we have every year that Scott schedules a meeting towards the, the last quarter of the year to come and look at discipline data and processes and to gather feedback. We always have one to two board members traditionally that either volunteer or voluntold to be on that committee. So this is our, our first request to see if anybody would like to serve on that. And then Scott will reach out to you to find out your availability.
I have a question. When are they normally held? I remember I did it as a parent. I came to this. When are they normally, what day?
It depends on board member availability. So it's usually weeknight, usually around 7:00 PM. And we start working with you to find out what days you're available. And then Scott finds a time in a building and schedules it.
I can volunteer before I'm voluntold.
Thanks, Sherelle.
Thanks, Sherelle.
Anybody else want to step forward to volunteer?
If you need two, there you go.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Sherelle.
All right. Scott will be reaching out to you to try to work on some dates. All right. Amended school calendar. As you know, we had a few emergency days so far this year.
We did. Locus? Did we have locusts?
No, locusts and frogs, not yet. Perhaps next week. So our original school calendar had five designated emergency days. I'm recommending we amend our calendar to make February 18th, which was the flexible learning day, which we're gathering data on right now. I was just talking to our student board members about this before the meeting, as well as after Memorial Day, May 28th, 29th, and 30th, which will be final exam days. And we'll retain May 31st as an emergency day. So that's the proposal that's out there. Just so you know, should we have another closure, what the plan is, is to make the 24th, which is an institute day, an attendance day, and the 31st, the institute day. So regardless of what happens with any other further emergency days, we want that 30th to be the last day of student attendance. After five, should there be more, the rest are considered act of God days. And I go through a process to appeal for those days not to have to be made up. So the worst case scenario is that there's one more day, but the 30th, no matter what, would be the last attendance day. We feel it's a good idea to put those finals grouped together, those final days on the 20th, 29th, and 30th. Other things to take note of, we're not moving graduation, it's remaining where it's at. And the final.
Seniors are digging that.
Yeah, the final senior attendance day is the 14th?
No, 24th.
Oh, 24th?
We have 88 days to graduation.
Who's counting? We're not moving the last day for seniors as a result. 17th. So we're not moving that date for seniors. Graduation stays where it's at. And I'm sure they're very upset that they're going to miss out on three days of school. So.
We saw you weeping.
I'll be at home crying.
What are you talking about? You're going to come in and help with math tutoring. I know you. All right. So later on, under consent agenda, is that amended calendar? Any questions on that?
Nope.
Nope.
All right. Master facility bid progress. This is one that's going to start showing up for a little while now. Jim will start spending more time with us over the next few months and.
Aren't you the lucky one?
I feel lucky.
And of course, we'll have master facility plan bids. We'll also have capital project bids coming up. There's some differences in how these work because of our GMAX contract. And Jim's going to go into some of the details of this. So go ahead, Jim.
Great, thank you. So many of these will be informational and some will be for board approval and others will be outside of the MFP, which will need approval as well. So let me kind of go backwards. We've had two bids already. On February 14th, we had a master facility plan bid. It was a smaller bid with concrete steel excavation in the turf field at South. And these, if you remember, you approved a GMAX, guaranteed MAX contract for construction costs with White and Company. And it's kind of under that umbrella. We do have owners cost though for a couple items. I'll explain that in a minute. But the first MFP is out there. We're scoping it, we're reviewing it. That'll come as an informational probably on the March 18th business meeting. We're still looking to get a Phase A, which is the first phase of the three years, budget number from White, so we can coordinate how well we did with the first rounds of bids that are going out. So 14th, we've had that. That was under the GMAX contract. You'll get the informational in March. On February 15th, we had asbestos removal. Now that's owner cost and that will come to you for approval. So I'll be bringing that to you on the 18th as well.
So just to be clear, the bids that come in under the GMAX contract, we work with White. We work on getting the lowest responsible bid like everything else, but those are already approved under that GMAX contract. So those don't come to the board for individual approval. That's just our working with White under that larger contract. Then what Jim's talking about with asbestos, there's certain other costs that are specified not under GMAX, but are specified under owner's cost. So those are the district's additional costs, still within the larger master facility plan budget, but those will come to the board for approval. How am I doing, Jim?
Great.
All right.
So on the asbestos, also, we're, Aries is our environmental consultant. They're coming to me by March 8th with a budget for all the phases. So I'll still waiting on that. For both of those bids, we had many turnout, so good competition. So I'm looking forward to see all that lines up with our budgets for the first part of the MFP, Phase A, and for asbestos, not just for Phase A, but overall. Coming up, March 7th is a huge MFP, master facility plan bid package. 30 packages are out there. And that's all trades, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, carpentry. So that will be a huge turnout. We'll have it here on the 7th and I'll be bringing that to you as an informational as well. But as Hank said, I go through every one of those contractors with White and look at what they're doing, make sure they understand the scope of the work. And even though they're the lowest bidder, really understand what the project means. And they're not looking to do a lot of extended contracts or change orders throughout the way. That's a big piece to this because moving parts with all the phases. And then coming up after that is March 20th. So Hank also mentioned about capital projects yearly. I bring that to you. That's when that's going out in combination with master facility plans will kind of be separated, but at the same date. And I'll be bringing that for board approval in April for the business meeting as well. There's many other future bid dates in April and June and thereafter, so many coming up as well. So we were talking about some of the outside of the MFP. Asbestos is one owner's cost, so there might be others like the ASC security. Those kind of items we're bringing to you for approval, not the contracted stuff with construction costs in the phases that we already agreed upon with White. So I hope that helps a little bit. Certainly can answer any questions, but bringing them in every workshop and board meeting is informationals or for approval.
I have a decent handle on phasing, but I've never heard you or anyone use the term Phase A. So what is Phase A?
That's Jim's term. It's first phase, phase one, first year.
First year, the summer, Phase A. In fact, the asbestos will start at South over spring break and then also in the summer. At North will just be the summer. Phase A for me is spring of 2019 to August of 2019.
Okay.
Good question.
Anything else?
So over the next couple of months, we'll have a first idea of kind of that contingency budget, you know, first taste of it?
We'll know where we kind of stand, how the bidding went. The big one's the 7th. That's when we're really going to see where we're kind of landing here.
Okay.
How we're going out early, which is great. I think we'll get a ton of people bidding on it. I think that's going to be the true tale of where we're at on this first, first phase.
We heard this morning that even though we're later to market than we would have wanted to have been, we're still ahead of pretty much everybody else, so.
Oh, good, good. So with the bidding process, I understand these are things outside of the work that White will do, like HVAC and you mentioned asbestos. Do we, but you're sitting down with them and, you know, it's by the lowest bid. Is there some, do you then make the decision? I mean, it's lowest bid, but obviously sometimes if it's not everything is what we think it should be, you may have to choose otherwise. Do you sit down with them? You said you sit down with them, but who makes the?
District 99 makes the final decision. So many of the contractors I've probably worked with in the past, good relationship, bad, however it may be, just talking to them and I can tell they understand the project in its entirety. That's a huge piece for me. What kind of, you know, how the scheduling is and if they're going to be able to handle with the workload. A lot of these specifications are demanding a timeframe. I feel that they're going to get it in that timeframe and put us behind, it's also a negative from my perspective. But we make, even though the contract's set out through White, we make the decision to go forward with it.
Okay, I assume so, I just wanted to just clarify.
The key, the key piece that's, that is included in there is the lowest responsible bidder. So it's not just the lowest number, they have to be able to be responsive in getting the work done. So, that's what Jim and White have to sit down and look at and make sure that the bid is responsible, that they can, they can deliver on what that they, they've offered there.
Jim, where are they removing asbestos over spring break?
So at South High School, of the work that's being done in the main office, the hallway has tiled that is asbestos. So we're going to start that work already over spring break.
Is going to be enough time to clear out?
Yep, they can do it, we're going to do double shifts. And then there'll be a cement floor there come after spring break.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be very apparent at South post-spring break, because that A hallway will look like construction has begun. So, that'll be the first taste of it.
As far as construction updates, I remember during the process of interviewing with White that they were going to have sort of a update process. I don't know if they were doing an app or what they were doing, but is that going to be tied into our website? How are we going to update the community on our overall construction process?
Yeah, Jill has been meeting with them over the last few weeks to talk through that process. So, they're working on a communications plan right now, and once we have the details of that, we'll bring it to the board. But, we met a couple of weeks ago to talk about strategy, and then Jill has some meetings set up with White to talk through that. So, that's coming.
Mark, have we already issued bonds for this Phase A, or when do, when do we do that?
No, actually, I just had a call with the underwriter today. So we're starting to talk about, we want to see how big, how much the bids are going to come in at to give us a better target for how much to cover for that phase. And more than likely, we'll issue them in April. The interest rates are really good right now.
Yeah, they're positive right now.
So we, we may even just cushion that and add some to it, just to get a lower rate locked in on some of these bonds. So, it's, we only issued nine million, and that won't cover this Phase A, so, Phase One.
Phase One? I don't know where A came from.
For one, Phase. So we're definitely, right now the target is 40 million for this phase of bond, issuing bonds, but it may go to 60, 55, somewhere in that range.
And I hope everyone's enrolled for Facility Friday too.
Oh, there you go Jill.
Although, I missed Friday last night.
And the bids will be posted, the two that we already had are posted. So if you have nothing else to do, and you just want to look at some numbers and contractors, feel free. So, those are posted usually 24 to 48 hours after the bid date.
And then we're also working on a public budget as well. The board has seen the preview of that budget spreadsheet, so, so that the budget numbers are totally transparent as well. So. Other master facility plan updates, while we're at it, so this is the next agenda item, will flow from one into the other. Along with looking at our safety around pedestrians at both North and South High. Last week, I met with the village and our architects, and started discussing feasibility and costs of pedestrian walkways, starting with North High. These are not items included in the master facility plan, they were not on the referendum. This would be a whole new project, a whole new scope of work. White worked for us last week and over the weekend, and came back this morning, talking about options, considering, you know, this is a, pretty much an exterior building structure to put in a pedestrian walkway today, right? Everything that people are in needs to be sprinkled, has to be safe, has to, you know, have a lot of things in there. Initial budget costs on a pedestrian walkway at North High range from four to four and a half million dollars.
You referring to a bridge over Main Street?
Mm-hmm.
Overpass?
An overpass, yeah.
And the village would permit?
Mm-hmm, yes, the village is open to that, that possibility, yeah.
But, I'm just curious, because I was thinking about this over the weekend too. If, if we did that, would you mandate all pedestrian traffic going through that bridge, or could you still walk across the street?
You would take the fencing that we've, similar fencing to what we have running parallel to Main Street, and you turn the corner at Grant, and run it all the way to the back corner of the Grant, to that's Grant and, what's the other cross street in that back corner?
Highland.
Highland. So that it would be very inconvenient for somebody not to cross at the bridge.
But we looked at this years ago, and there was concern that people would still...
Correct, yeah, I mean, you're still counting on people going up the stairs or the ramp to a 14 and a, pretty much a 14 and a half foot high crossing, and crossing over to the other side of the street.
Is there any more discussion about...
Make that accessible.
Oh, we would, yeah, it'd be with ramping.
It's part of the big cars.
No, with ramping.
Ramping?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yeah.
So you'd have a really long ramp.
Very long, yeah, cutback.
For every foot of rise, you...
It's about a 200 foot ramp.
So it's, it's a long...
On the parking lot side. The other side, the building's at a higher elevation, so you don't have to come down as far. You need about a 30 foot walkway down on the other side, because the building's raised up higher.
So, I am horrible at construction visuals, so that's why I appreciated all the master facility visuals. So I can't...
Oh, that would, right, that would be coming.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, I'm saying, I can't picture what you guys are saying. So it would, I'm assuming this would be for the students only, but we're talking about other people?
Well, anybody that goes across Main Street.
Anybody who's walking that street.
Yeah, there'd be access from our parking lot and from the sidewalk side.
Okay, so it would go just sidewalk to sidewalk, it wouldn't...
It'd be from parking lot to building.
Yeah.
The parking lot is the school's parking lot?
Correct, yep, it is.
And staff, there's staff, there's parking.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a...
Students and staff.
To the school.
Yes.
And you'd anticipate roughly the same cost to do one over 63rd?
So that's, we started with, they're working on both. We started with feasibility and options for North. North is a little different because we own both sides of the street. And the street is also village property. When we start talking about 63rd Street, we only have property on one side of the street. The street is combined village and county. And also running down 63rd Street are high voltage power lines. So there is a far greater deal of complexity with 63rd Street. Underpasses are not, not of interest of most government bodies.
Yeah.
A lot of bad things happen in underpasses, yeah.
You know, I understand the, you know, we want to, we want to look at, at the situation. We want to, if there's a way to make things safer, we want to make things safer. I think it's important though, that we look at the whole picture and really evaluate all the options and, and, you know, how effective those options are truly going to be. You know, there is no, there is no choice. There is nothing that we can do that will guarantee 100%.
No.
Something's not going to happen, and...
But you can make things safer.
And at some, some point, we're forced, this is the difficult decisions that we've, you know, that we've signed up for, is to, is to make the, make the, do the calculus to figure out when, you know, what does, what can we afford to do? What does it make sense for us to do? What will people agree is the right thing to do? And it seems to me that needs to be a whole process that has to be looked at before we can run to, hey, let's see what we can do about putting a...
Right, so tonight's conversation...
Put it and all that.
Tonight's conversation, I hope to ascertain from the board, is do you want the administration to dedicate time, effort, resources into at least determining feasibility and cost at, at both schools? I don't want to even assume that that's something the board wants us to invest in. I want to have that conversation.
Well, I'm curious, because Nancy was saying this was something you guys talked about years ago, so what was, where did, where did go?
I don't think it's ever been formally...
Never to this level.
Even brought to the board table. I, I know, at times it's...
We talked.
I, I can't find...
I think it's a couple times, I think it came before I was here, and then at least once it's ever been.
Yeah, I couldn't find any evidence of that.
And it was more in the center of, that was before the, the...
They changed the, the parking lot.
They even put the parking lot in.
And when it was a ball field. It was more from the ball field to the ball field on the other, or the...
Further north.
Yeah, yeah, it was more in that neighborhood.
She's correct. And this one's actually a little north.
Pardon? Yeah.
That's where I was trying.
Or athletic events.
Right.
Because there was a parking lot there, so that would be a way, an avenue to get to the sidewalk to the stadium field.
Right. And that's when we, when we changed the, taking that ball field out, and, and putting it really over to the other side, you know, on Prince Street, kind of thing. And then extending the fence along there to prevent students from just going midway through.
That was the key component, especially the six foot fence. Obviously, that was our argument with the village, and they gave the six foot fence, and that's helped tremendously. What Hank's thought process is, as we sit here, this isn't right on the dedicated intersection, this is due north a little bit. Bear with me, if you know where that stair wall is, that's kind of by the fieldhouse at North. So it's probably 50 yards north of that intersection, and that's where that overpass would be, and not directly at the intersection.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
We did not have drawings, we did talk about this, I do remember the conversations. But it was further down, and it was, it was much more basic. We, you know, this one would involve, you know, when we went to White, we said, we want something with an overpass where it'd be a bit of a shelter and not a cage. Years have passed, it's been 10 years. So, a little more shelter for the weathering and elevators. We've, we've agreed, and we don't really want to put elevators at our schools where kids can get in there, we don't even want to go there. So, that ramp on the one side will be pretty long, or zigzag, we haven't figured that out yet. So, this, it would be a pretty big fixture, 14, 6 High on the bottom.
So Hank, I mean, my opinion is, I think it's absolutely something we should look at. I mean, take a look, I think it's, you look at the feasibility, look at the cost. I'm sure you've looked at, but is there a, a person or a consulting company out there that specializes in traffic safety, intersection safety, that can come and look at all options for us, both in front of North and 63rd and Spring, you know, Springside Road here?
Sure.
I want to look at the whole picture, and not just pieces of...
I'd like to bring, you want to talk about the community member?
Yeah, I'll get there.
Okay.
So, at Grant and Main Street in 2015, there was a traffic study done. I can forward that to the board, the village has it as a public document. This type of improvement wasn't a recommendation of that traffic study. Many of the improvements are ones that we've made to, that we in conjunction with the village. Striping on the crosswalks, lights, signal controls, those kinds of things that they've done. We did meet with the village last week and talk through and made sure that we had addressed all of those things. We made a couple suggestions that we've seen recently, and just kind of how long lights change for and those, you know, little tweaks, but the significant changes have already been made by the village to that intersection over the last couple of years that came out of that, that traffic study. I'll get over to the South Side in a second. Really, when it comes down to it, the accident last week, the only way you prevent that accident is a pedestrian bridge, and somebody takes that rather than crossing the street. So, that's that intersection. On the, over here at South High, on this part of town, 63rd Street, Ms. Lester, a citizen in District 99, has recently petitioned both the village and the county about improvements on 63rd Street, particularly at Dunham and at Springside. I wasn't aware that that, that request was made until last week, but it sounds like that process has moved along. I don't know, it's moved along. I don't know how fastly, slowly, whatever. But I did talk to both the village and the county in the last week about that petition, and have heard that the county, who ultimately is the first decision maker on 63rd Street, will be releasing some recommendations related to Mrs. Lester's petitions sometime in the next week. So, we'll see what that is and, and find out what comes around there. But I did share with them particularly our concerns around the Springside and 63rd intersection, that that, that that's a very challenging spot for our students. So, I at least, you know, shared our perspective about that. So we'll see what comes from, from that as well. This is what I have learned in the last week. The county, the village, us, all are very interested, obviously, in student safety and students crossing the street. We'll continue to listen to suggestions, we'll continue to take those to all the parties that are involved. These are very complex things to work through, and not fully within the district's control to make changes. But we can keep, we can keep working on them. It sounds, Dan, you're saying you're, you're interested in learning more? Is there anybody that's opposed to us looking more into the feasibility and cost of solutions such as walkways, underpasses, those kinds of things?
I would, I would just say that I wouldn't want to see too much time devoted to any one thing at this point. I like, as Dan was saying, I think looking at every, looking at everything, I mean, there's just so many, it's easy, and it's easy to focus on those. So, we have obviously that, the intersection right there at North where we, I mean, I, I can't talk about, it's too upsetting for me, but I... But that's only one point. Right? And our kids are coming from all different directions, and, and, and so there's so many, there, there, we need to look at, we need to look at the entire perimeter and where the students are coming from. I think Mrs. Lester's petition was also talking about over on Main Street, you know, at Norfolk. I mean, so, I mean, I just, the kids are coming from all different directions, and, and this is just a super difficult thing to address. And, and we really, I think we need to look at everything and not focus in on any one thing too much, especially right now. I, you know, it's, it's, it's really tempting to try to work on some, you know, make, you know, focus on one thing that we think is really going to solve a problem and, and take action and, and really, you know, that, that makes us feel, feel good about it. But if we're going to be responsible about this, we really need to look at, at everything and, and identify where are those weaknesses? And, and maybe there are some things that we can do in the short term that won't involve a huge investment, but there are things, you know, some actions that we can take short term. I'd be interested in seeing those studies that were, the study that was done prior, and, and, you know, seeing what they looked at exactly. You know, did they look at, at, at everything, or were they, were those traffic...
I'll send those, you know, right? I at least have the, the Grant and Main Street, I'll send that out to the board so that you can see that.
I do know when they ran the, the street behind South, which is on 99 property, and they put in speed bumps.
Yes.
That that was a big, well, it was a big fight because we paved our own road.
We own that road.
We own that road. But we did put in speed bumps, and I know that we don't have speed bumps elsewhere either. So to your point, I, I think we're all interested in seeing what is available, but not necessarily just focusing on a bridge or a crosswalk, but what, to, to Dan's point, what, what would a traffic expert really recommend here?
I will say the, the village, and then I spoke briefly with the county today. The village spent a lot of time with us last week, talking through things. They've all been very receptive, and I do appreciate that cooperation that they've given us, so.
Yes, absolutely.
So we'll continue to work on that, and we'll bring back to the board what we, we learned going forward. Other master facility plan items, we've had a lot of work going on related to the master facility plan. Either in the past week or in the upcoming weeks, upcoming week, things that we have or will discuss include the South administrative, or South A Wing walkway. And when we put in the new administrative suite, we lose the hallway. So, we saw today the plans for putting a temporary... So we saw today the plans for putting a temporary walkway in the courtyard to cut behind the administrative suite to get through.
Oh, it'll be lovely weather.
It'll be, it'll be covered and weather protected, so. Radio, TV studio at North High, a lot of conversation around that. Life skills classrooms at North High, yeah.
On that, that temporary, what we see is that, will that be shared with us?
Yeah, today we just saw the, here's where we're thinking of putting it. So that's
We have the, it's the, it's complicated, right? You have, you have to allow the students to get around all that, but then how do, how do the, our, our staff that are working yet still in those office spaces get to those office spaces without always having to go through everybody's office space?
We've got it all worked out, yeah.
All right, I'm really curious to see how that's
It's coming. Today we gave them the approval for it. Ed was, Ed had a whole bunch of feedback and then, then we'll see.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
Bleacher squad rooms, we're getting close on those.
I wasn't, I wasn't able to open that.
Which one?
I don't know why. The North or South bleachers, so.
Let me know and I can get them to you. Culinary arts labs and North High kitchen are meetings tomorrow. Coming, I'll get up some updates around that. North High loading dock, a lot of conversation around that. Not only is that in phase one, but at the planning and zoning meeting, we had three neighbors show up with some concerns that, then we talked to them afterwards about their concerns and we've made a few changes based on, on neighbor feedback, including revised gates, some landscaping changes, signage changes and some sound testing for our neighbors, some additional sound testing. White showed us some potential renderings today. We gave them some feedback pretty soon. By the time we go to the village council, we'll have new renderings to bring to them based on the feedback from our neighbors.
Do we have a date on that yet?
Yes, so April, the two April meetings, I'll send them out to you guys, the actual dates. They're the two Tuesdays in April, but I don't want to say the wrong dates. I'll, I'll send them to you. We have some stormwater retention stuff with the bleachers to go through before we can go to the village, but we think that's all worked out at this point, so. And as Jim mentioned, construction is on schedule, hopefully to start in May, assuming all of those approvals take place, but asbestos removal at South will begin over spring break. So that's where we stand with master facility plan.
Squad rooms will be done by football season?
No, those will be done, we're targeting from after fall sports are done and being done in time for a year from now, if that all works as plans.
Or spring soccer.
Mm-hmm.
Our winters are so mild.
Yeah.
Get out there, I'm in January and when it's fifty, hello.
Not a problem.
Any freedom of information requests?
We received and responded to three.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes, I'm going to be crafty here, acceptance of the donation from our lovely foundation from almost $2,000 to two science teachers at North, which we are so appreciative of. But is there anything that anybody would like to take out of, separate out from the consent agenda for further discussion?
I just need to make note that both the consent agenda item A and consent agenda item B had late additions, so they have been revised. In the appointment consent agenda A, we added Patrick Fardy, being named the CTE department chair at South High School. And consent agenda item B, we had a resignation from Sarah Hayduk, teacher at South High School as well.
Thank you. So do we have a mo, go ahead.
Move that we accept the consent agenda for the personnel report A and B, financial pages, student tours, revised student tours, amended eighteen, nineteen calendar and the acceptance of the donation from the education foundation.
Thank you, Terry.
One second.
Mike?
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Consent agenda carries. Moving on to the policy committee report, second reading?
You saw all of these last month. There's been no board member comments in here. We did have one administrative team comment on, oh, which one was it?
Seven point two five.
Thank you. Seven point two five O, Student Support Services. We heard from Vincent Aaron, our C-triple-S assistant principals, on a couple of changes they'd like to make in there that are in there. Otherwise, they're just as you saw them last month.
Did, did, Dan and Rick, did you, did you guys see that, that change on seven point two five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And did, any concerns or comments about that?
No concerns.
Okay, I'm good then.
Make the motion. Okay.
Well, the motion had to come from?
Yeah.
The committee?
The committee.
Oh, is it up for approval this, I thought it was next week?
No, this is the second.
The second.
Yep.
Do you need it?
Nope. So I move that we approve the changes. Do you need me to read all of the?
No, just the, the listed policies.
All right, so I, I move that we approve the list of policies as noted from policy committee.
Second.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. The committee, policy committee report passes. We're moving on to the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none. We'll move on to communications and announcements. Don, anything on Lend?
We had a meeting last Friday. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend.
I, I was unable to attend because of, obviously, we had some
I'm aware of the agenda. I mean, we talked through things at the executive committee level. We talked through, you know, the five-hour clock day legislation that is currently moving its way through the legislature. It's not really clear as to what Lend's position is because I don't know that we have a universal position. And I missed the discussion of the meeting, so I can't report back as to what any guidance would have been given to peg agnos as far as our, our official position of Lend.
I do have the Lend, I was sent late Friday, the, I just haven't gotten it to you yet, the PowerPoint materials from that meeting, so I'll forward that onto the board this week, so you can at least see the discussion items that were, and there's a lot of detail around these bills listed in that presentation.
The executive committee has been working on the last about six months about how to restructure the dues arrangements for Lend. Historically, it's been based strictly on the number of students at, at schools, so a couple of school districts have been really bearing the majority of the dues structure at Lend based on their total enrollment. And it's not necessarily fair because total usage of Lend is not strictly represented by number of students. So we're working on a revised formula that would work, both have a component of total students and then just a flat fee arrangement for all members of Lend, so as to make it a little bit more equitable across all school districts. That could mean that we might have, as our district, might have to pay a little bit more than what we are, but it wouldn't be substantial. And we think that's probably more representation for all members of Lend. Other than that, I don't think that there was anything too substantial on the agenda for last Friday's meeting.
But Mike and Nancy and I will be at the Alliance Legislative Conference tomorrow and Wednesday, so I'm sure a lot of those items will be up for discussion in that setting as well.
Okay, moving on to, thank you, Don. Moving on to the report on the School Association for Special Education, DuPage County, or SACID. Just really two things to report. Dr. McGuffin is being oriented to the, as the new executive director and that's, that's going very well. And I wanted to congratulate SACID. They did present at the Council for Exceptional Children, the National Conference, a very well-received presentation on once in a self-control, excuse me, once in a self-contained special education, not always in self-contained special education. And they're trying to do more and more presentations on a national level, so congratulations to them. The 99 Education Foundation?
Well, remember
Thursday.
Thursday. Come hungry. It is our annual Pizza Wars and there are still tickets available at www.pizzawars.org. And you can purchase them for $10 in advance and $15 at the door. And we hope to see everyone there.
And it's at South?
It is, it's at South High.
Ten different pizza places, I think?
Nine. One pulled out, one pulled out, but I think there'll be plenty of food and water and sodas are going to be available also, so.
It's a great deal. I mean, you get to sample
Dollar, dollar and eleven cents per slice.
Right. You get a sample, it's like going to the car show and sitting, you know, you try all the
And I don't think anybody goes home hungry.
Yeah. Know what you like. You don't go home.
And there's coupons usually they give out as well. Yes. And you'll get a booklet and you get to vote for your favorite pizza, sauce and crust. So there are three awards given out.
I'm, I'm there already.
And even if you don't want to come and eat pizza, you can go and contribute
On the website.
On the website to the foundation.
Yes.
So it's a great, a great time will be had by all. And what time does it start, Terry, at South?
It starts at 5:30.
5:30.
5:30, so you can come hungry. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that earlier and that, but it seems to get better every year, so enjoy. It's really a fun time. You get to see all your friends there too and chat.
Mike, did you have anything from the Illinois Association of School Boards?
Our spring meeting's March 6th at Naperville Central. That's next, next week already, I think, right? So, hey, yay, March.
Hard to believe.
Hard to believe. And they have renovations there at, did White Company do theirs?
That's correct, yes. Yep, about ten years ago.
Yeah, yeah, so they always like to show their things too, so.
So we will have an upcoming board meeting, March 4th, a special workshop meeting at 6:30 here, and then again on March 18th, the monthly business meeting will be at 6:30 PM again here. We are going to be going, we're going to be action, excuse me, we're going to be asking for a motion to go into closed session. We built, we will be returning from closed session to take action on a personnel matter. You're welcome to stay, but it will be very quick when we return, I'm sure. Do we have a motion to go into closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation,